Good evening. Today is Monday, May 7th, 2018. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We will start with a moment of silence in memory of several school system employees who have recently passed away. Jennifer Ferguson was a substitute teacher for Cabarrus County Schools who passed away on April 17th. Nicholas Norman is a student who passed away on April 25th. George Lambert III was a bus driver for us who passed away on April 26th. And Rose Crawford was also a bus driver who passed away on May 2nd. Please join me. I'd first like to thank Deputy Jacob Barrier from Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Thank you for being here with us tonight. Board members, as we look to set the agenda, I would like to take a motion that we amend the agenda to include a consideration of amending the calendar. This will be an action item even though it's a work session, but time is of the essence to have this discussion.
Dr. Kirk?
Is that Mr. Walter?
Harrison.
Harrison? Then Mr. Walter's right across me. Okay, so for amending the agenda, Robert made the motion, David seconded. All in favor of adding that to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 7-0. Now I'll take a motion that we approve the agenda with the modification we just approved. Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mr. Shoemaker made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 7-0. So we will now move on to our consent agenda items. So Ms. Klutz, we will start with the budget amendments for this month.
Today, we have three budget amendments for you.
We have three budget amendments for you today. We'll start with the state that's displayed above. The first one is a small allocation for group homes for EC. The next is our allocation from the state for our Read to Achieve Camp that happens during the summer. The next is for a $2,000 allotment that we've received from DPI for some staff development for our early grade reading program or proficiency. The next one is an allotment from the Indian Gaming Fund. Those are funds that we've anticipated and planned on. The next is a small allotment for Stop Arm for the buses. And then a minor $30 fines and forfeitures adjustment and some additional... So with the bonuses, the state reverts any that was not paid and then they reallocate. So we ended up with a positive reallocation of funds. Any questions on the state? Okay. The next one is for federal funds. You'll see a small allocation to EC funds and then the other two are reclassifications. Any questions on federal? Okay. And the final one is the first allocation there is to budget for our VEX Robotics Summer Camp, get that on the books for the summer, and then a reallocation or reclass of some transportation funds for...through our Medicaid expenses. Any questions on that?
Okay, board members, can we put this on the consent agenda for next week? Okay, thank you. Again, just to note, the item about the calendar, we will put after item 5.03, so basically a 5.03-2, and before we get into the two final agenda items that are really board-driven. Our next item is regarding the reviewing the policies for approval on the first reading. So Ms. Reimer and Ms. Burns?
Good evening, thank you. We have two policies tonight on first read that have significant changes. First one is citizenship and character education includes significant organizational and editorial changes to improve clarity and more closely mirror the statutory requirements, updates the statutory references. And then policy 5071 electronically stored information updates agency title in the first paragraph and titles the hyperlinks and illegal references. We also have three policies that have just technical changes to wording or legal references. That is our student voter registration and preregistration. It updates legal citations and updates information and legal citations in the footnotes. 4700 is student records. It updates hyperlink and illegal references and also has an attorney recommendation where they added the word embarrassing. And then 5030 is community use of facilities, updates legal citations, and then some attorney recommendations, again adding minor changes, so.
So let's start off with the 3530. Any questions on the updated citizenship policy?
Now, Chair, just a clarification on the 3530. On the real last page, page 2 of 2, it talks about the curriculum and demonstrating a value and effectiveness of volunteer contributions and kind of part of the curriculum is volunteering in the community. I don't see too much...I don't see any addressing, are we responsible for providing transportation for these activities? Or I think there needs to be some wording where if we approve volunteer service, make it part of the curriculum, what if they've got to go two miles down the road? I'm a little concerned for that.
So to my knowledge, would you not provide any sort of transportation so much? If you want some extra language, we'd have to refer to our attorney to see if...
Would it be non-school hours? Adding non-school hours?
Do we need to have wording? I was just concerned for saying, you now must volunteer, but you've got no wheels and you gotta go two miles down the road.
I think my general rationale there is always have an exception for disability and I probably have an exception if somebody's not hardship. I mean, we don't want to situate with somebody not being able to read or perform, but I don't think they have a legal obligation. It's a general matter to provide transportation because if somebody shows they cannot do it, then you probably try to...
Robert, do you have a suggested phrasing change?
Can I ask a general question? Can you give me a scenario under which the board would require volunteer activity by the students?
So I'm not aware of any...Dr. Hill knows of any within our curriculum, then she may speak to that, but I'm not aware that there are any requirements. It just says may require...
So it's really curriculum?
Correct. It's through the curriculum.
Yes, okay.
One may way, resident, I think if you get to the stage of proposing that type of requirement, then there's some transportation at that stage, resident, is going to come up now with some language that's...
And I guess I'm thinking it could operate almost in a...over the course of the semester, students might be asked to find an activity to participate in for two hours and then just have like a little certification, because I've had students before at things who needed their paper signed that they attended or participated in, a food drive or whatever. Okay, any other questions on 3530? Okay, can that one go on consent?
I don't like the word requirement. That is a little firm, I think, for my taste as far as a community volunteer service requirement in order to demonstrate, et cetera.
Well, I think you need to go back to the may include. So that's where the option is with that leading word.
Yep. I think it's...I think that's putting the option on the school. So if they do require it, then now we've got some schools that are requiring it and some schools that aren't. Then how do we punish the ones who did not accomplish the requirement, et cetera? I don't know that the schools need that on them.
Dr. Hill?
I was going to speak to the curriculum may include. So just something that I can think of offhand, maybe with the ID curriculum, the DP program and students from 11th through 12th grade, there's typically a service learning project requirement and some students may opt to do some type of volunteer work. That work has to be outside of the school. So, excuse me, that's one example that I can think of where the curriculum would require
So any other comments? Can this policy go on consent agenda next week? Consensus for consent? Policy 5071 electronically stored information retention.
You over the requirement, why we're changing the 60 days of holding emails to three years? That's paragraph A.
What page are you looking at?
This is 51...5071, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, it's crossed out. It's just, it's not in red.
Yeah, currently it would say, it says that we'll retain email, system emails, I guess, for 60 days and that's been X-ed out and now it's three years. Is that a legal requirement or why would that change?
I think it is and I think our attorney can refer to that, but I think it is a legal requirement. Something that...and Kelly, Dr. Probst can speak to that, too.
I think, as I recall the policy committee discussion, it's not a legal requirement but that it is built into your system already and it just, it happens. See, legal requirement, you could have a transitory email, you know, meeting today at 2:30, that could, would not have to be stored. The other hand, the system, as it was explained, saves those anyway for more than three years. So since that was the practice and seems unlikely to change, the thought was to just make them all three years rather than have different categories.
So there's no additional cost to the system to do that?
Yeah, I would say, is there a risk at keeping for three years? I don't know the pros and cons. I know most companies will not keep it for three years. That's quite a long retention. Thank you. This has always been an issue as to whether or not we keep it or we go ahead and dispose of the email at a shorter period of time. At the time, our attorneys were giving advice prior to our current attorneys, the idea was to retain it. And we actually have it more than three years. On the construction side, we were saving the documents and emails for seven years. We are...I mean, whatever the board decides to do within the law, but that's what we have been advised in the past.
Brian, do you know what the state retention is? Maybe you know what the retention is?
I was just going to comment on that and just to say from the aspect of us having complaints and lawsuits, being able to go back and retrieve some of those documents for the attorneys is quite useful. So to reduce the retention time could impact us in a negative way.
But again, there's not a set legal for public bodies?
There is. It's a ridiculously long document. It's probably 80 to 100 pages dealing every possible type of document you can imagine and a state's set schedule for those documents. I'm not aware of anybody who knows those limits, so what people just do is apply a minimum of three years to those. The issue really is on, I think, emails that don't have any permanent value and the state's pretty clear, you do not have to retain those. On the other hand, who makes that judgment call as to whether they're significant or not? And if we...what if we find that we really do want an email and somebody has disposed of it? I think I actually raised at the policy committee the fact that the law does not require three years, but it's certainly not a bad idea. And since it was stated that it's already built in to the system, then I seem to have no problem with it.
Yeah, that's a configurable item in an email system, so it could be different. That's my only question.
That's right.
We're not bound by a system requirement. It's configurable, so. Okay, so any other questions on this policy? Can this go on the consent agenda? Good consent? The next three, student voter registration and preregistration. Any questions or comments on that one?
Consent.
Consent? Student records? Action.
Action.
Carolyn, there are laws and I know you want to follow the laws.
I know, but we gonna put it on action.
Okay. That's why I look to my right.
That's right.
And the last one, policy 5030, community use of facilities? Consent? Okay, I see a lot of nods. Okay. So we will now move on to agenda item 4.03, policies for approval on second reading.
We have had no comments, questions, concerns. Anybody has heard these last time? We do have student parent grievance procedure going back to our policy committee in May as the board asks, so that will be May 15th meeting. We'll be discussing that again and we were looking to get approval on the PLS updates for that one and then revisit what the board asked us to revisit.
Okay, so we should...should we approve that one tonight or next week? Approve it and then let it go back as approved so we're not debating the rest of the changes back and forth?
Correct.
Okay. So on these first two policies, 1740, 4010, 5001, and 3540, both of those for consent? Okay. And then the rest of the policies on there, 2300, 2310, 3100, consent? Those are very minor.
Minor, yep.
Okay, so we'll do consent on all of those. Thank you. Okay, next we'll move into the agenda for the items for consideration for action at our business meeting next week. Welcome, Ms. Klutz, back.
Thank you. So we've come before the board this afternoon to ask you if it's okay to ask the county to release $860,000 of the contingency funds. So when we started this project about a year ago, we planned for a contingency of about $1.6 million, which is about 2% of the project total, which is a small amount of contingency for that size of a project. We...if the board approves this request to ask for the $860,000 of contingency, then we will have a remaining balance of $221,500. So there's a narrative in board docs that explains that we've had additional site work and challenges on the site that greatly impacted our scope and finished preparing the site. Some details of that and certainly Tim Lauter or Brian Kohn can come and answer any detailed questions that you have regarding that.
And I wanted to share that at the agenda setting meeting, Carolyn and I were there and they originally came with a smaller amount, but not feeling completely comfortable that was going to carry us through for several months until all of the site work gets more manageable. So the recommendation was for them to go back and consider what is the worst case right now for site work so we can get through this and not have to go back to the commissioners every month or two. So...and that's what they came back with and said, this is kind of the worst case for the near future. But if you all saw the updated pictures and whatnot, you know, there are walls going up and hopefully we will soon get to the point where we're not having this high-risk soil grading issue, so.
Could Brian or Tim come and talk to us and tell us what the status is of where we are in construction and what we still have to get done? Just I know we've seen an update, but for the publics, public may not know where we are. That has seemed probably seen the cranes or something.
Are you guys posting the pictures on the website, too? Just for people to look?
We do. Come on, school get posted. We're pretty tight here. So yeah, we, about every two to three weeks, we'll update the website with job site pictures. I'll have...
It's the button. Yes, okay.
I have Christine Lewis go in and take care of that for us.
Okay. Because I think it's exciting to start seeing the walls and all of that.
It is a very exciting job site right now. We pretty much have gotten everything up to grade, which is great. We still have some areas we're going to have to dry out before we put final grades like the tennis courts and stuff like that. But we have precast going up right now. We have structural steel going in there right now. We also have our structural masonry going up right now. We have roofing structures going on, pouring slabs. We're having the parking lots are being set up and graded right now and there'll be stone going down this week on those, which will really pretty much waterproof those for us for, you know, remainder of the project. So that standpoint, we took a tour of our new principal you assigned out there and I think Ben with the high school education program went out with us and they were, they were kind of overwhelmed a little bit about what was going on because there were so many people on site. There's probably 150 to 200 people on site every day, so it's really, really going well.
And are we on schedule?
No, sir.
How far off of schedule are we?
We're still approximately about eight weeks behind schedule. We did meet with the president and the vice president of the company last week, went over some options for us to be able to recapture some of that time and then try to get a commitment for them to make sure they've had a couple, I think, conference calls with their staff here on site to try to have us recapture that over the next 14 months.
And is getting on schedule doable and reasonably doable?
We'll probably know that in the next two to three weeks.
Okay.
Good weather helps.
Now, Tim, when you say worst-case scenario, what else worse could happen? And we're looking at, you said you're worst-casing it and I'm seeing, you know, walls going up and I'm hearing a lot of rose-colored glasses outlook, but yet I've got a million-dollar concern here. Game, play that for me, please.
Our biggest concern was, you know, getting the soils. We basically just ran out of good soil on site, had to actually import some soils, which, you know, contributed to a lot of our costs there for this, an extra cost. We are, the building pad and the parking lot areas now, we are at grade and have moved almost all the dirt we've had to build on that site. We do have the east side, okay? Fortunately, that is all athletic fields. We do have a stadium complex there, but our risk of having bad soils and causing us to have to really work hard to get, you know, 95% compaction in those areas are much, much less than it would be on the site where we're doing now. So that really helps take the risk off of us from that side. Plus, we have about 27,000 yards of dirt that was supposed to be imported to this side of the site that we did not move yet. So it gives us some flexibility being able to adjust the grades to allow us to hopefully offset some of the issues we may have with groundwater. Plus, we can build it in the summer, which is really nice, too, during the dry season. Helps a lot as well.
And you'll get longer days, so.
Yes. And we do have a commitment from the precast company to manage job at 50-plus hours a week, maybe moving in a second crew for the other portion of it, so that allows us to capture weeks of time there as that goes up quicker than it would be if they just worked the regular hours.
Okay, just this information, the commissioners had it on their work session agenda tonight already, because remember they meet the first and third Mondays, we meet the first and second. So they have to have it on their work session in order to consider a vote. So if we're okay with it and approve it next week, they already have it on their agenda as a contingency and then they'll vote the third Monday, so.
Y'all enjoy the aerial things that Brian ever did. I think that gives you probably a good idea of what you can see from the air. You can see things change pretty much weekly.
See, I like the big image of those, the structural steel and the precast concrete. It just gives you, and you see the people on the ground, the massive size of what a high school really is, especially when you build it three stories.
And we're open to tours any time. Tim and Brian tour service. You just have to know, we'll bring you a hard hat and vest and we'll put you on site.
Well, maybe a little more down the road.
How is PLC, I mean, I know we're talking high school, but how's the PLC coming along also since they're kind of going handed?
It's coming along well. They poured the slab today and they expect structural steel to show up next Monday, so walls will start going up there as well. They have curb and gutters pinned, so the site's coming along fine. It's sealed up and we'll have stone base down probably within the next two weeks. So that project's moved on very well.
Will you let us run the drone or do you have to have special licensure and approval for that?
You can run the drone whenever you want.
No, I'll get in line.
You do need approval.
I'll get in line.
Five miles from airport.
I think it's going to be a free program.
Yeah. And I think we'll defer to Rob on knowing all those rules.
He won't let me run the drone. I don't know about that.
Okay. So let's, this needs to be actually voted on, right, not consent? Okay, so we will keep that. That will be on the action agenda. Thank you and thank you for representing us at the commissioners tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have agenda item 5.02 regarding the Cabarrus County Schools Title I Plan. So Mrs. Oliphant?
There she is.
Good evening, board members.
On? Is it on?
Red light?
Yes.
Before we begin the presentation, it's important to note that we have not received our planning allotment for the 2018-19 school year as of yet. We do anticipate having that before the end of June. So our presentation today and our plan is based upon a needs assessment and data and information that we've gathered thus far. So we'll begin with an overview of Title I. And so these are the key requirements with regards to Title I funding. The first one is supplement, not supplant, so they should be in addition to local and state funds that schools receive. They may be used for children from preschool age to high school. They're supporting the schools identified as Title I and we have multiple ways that we can identify those schools. We'll talk about that in a little bit. It requires the staff to be 100% highly qualified. We have to serve any schools that are above 75% poverty. So we do have, we can serve schools as low as 35%, but if a school is 75% poverty, it is a requirement unless they're receiving comparable local or state funding. And then we serve schools and fund them in rank order of poverty and we can do that two ways, either by direct certification or by looking at the percentage of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. And we always consider our per pupil allotment in assigning those funds. And it's important to keep in mind that the primary goal of Title I funds is to increase student achievement for our most vulnerable or at-risk students of not attaining great So with Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA, as we refer to it, there is a specific focus on birth to age eight or birth to third grade. And so this is very much aligned with how we have historically identified our Title I schools. We focus on early intervention and really trying to close the gaps for our kids at the elementary level. And so again, this is very much aligned with ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, and wanting us to focus on closing the gaps and bridging the development for students from birth to third grade. So our Title I budget process. We'll talk about how we determine what we're going to use our funds for. So looking at our historical glance of our Title I budget for the past two years, we've received in 2016-17 over $4.2 million. And then again, last year, our initial allotment was again over $4.2 million. The main difference here that you'll see is with our carryover. So for the 2016-17 school year, we had more carryover in our budget than we had for this current school year. So carryover would be unused funds that the schools didn't encumber.
With the school level or...
It could be district level or school level combined. And so those are just, schools don't necessarily get the amount that they had in carryover. It all goes into one bucket and then it's dispersed back out to the schools. If they didn't use it for some reason. Some schools deliberately have a plan for what they're going to use the money for and so they carry it over. Or it could just be they didn't get to using it. A lot of times that happens with parental involvement funds, but as you'll see, that decrease, the decrease in it is a good thing, the decrease in the carryover, because schools are spending more of their money. And Amy and I have worked closely with the schools.
Mr. Walter, also some things that would generate carryover would be lag higher of teaching positions, maternity leave, those kinds of things that the schools can't really control, the same that we have in our normal positions.
Looking to hear is things that are out of our control. If it isn't, I mean, if you've got a plan to spend the money, you want to spend the money to make the difference in the kids.
So I can't promise you that 100% is out of our control, but most of it is out of the school's control. We also, you know, we're budgeting for FICA, retirement, hospitalization, those types of things. And if there's any situation where a teacher is out or a staff member's out, those funds would be remaining there. So a little bit of carryover certainly is good because of the way that the federal funds come in. They do not come in until November-ish. So to be able to pay our staff in August and September, we do need some of those carryover funds. So it's a good thing. You don't want to have too much carryover, though.
Well, thank you, Kelly, for helping me understand that, help the public understand it as well.
Yes. And so like she said, it's not, we don't want to have too much carryover and so Amy and I have worked closely with the schools to ensure they're spending their money in that current school year, with that in mind.
Have we, have we been steadily declining on our Title I in allocations? I guess our free and reduced lunch population is decreasing and that's what's leading to these decreases?
So our free and reduced lunch population has decreased some. It has...
Over the last several years?
Over the past couple of years, it has, yes.
Okay. And so that's, that's the basic funding mechanism for the federal government? Okay, and so that's, that's the basic funding mechanism for the federal government to provide us these funds? Is that correct?
Yes.
Because I think that's the total of the whole system. So if the system grows 500 students, but we don't grow in the 41% of free and reduced lunch with those 500, that's where the decrease.
Yes.
So it's very minor, though. It's not a big difference.
Any other questions? So in the process of looking at our budget and what we spent our $4.6 million on for this current school year, 85.9% of that went directly to schools. And then we had about 14.1% that was reserved as a district set aside. But even within that 14.1%, you can see that still 12.7% of that went back to schools. So although we reserved some at the district level, the vast majority of that was still used for schools. And this slide has a breakdown so you can see exactly how that district set aside was used. So we're required to have a minimum of 1% for parent and family engagement. And so that is what we set aside. For neglected and delinquent youth, we can determine as an LEA how much we want to set aside and we had .3%. Homeless children and youth, again, we can determine that and we had .8%. Foster care, .4%. And then other district initiatives such as providing professional development. Greg Tang is a math professional development. We provide for all of our Title I schools for their teachers. Summer Bridge Transition Camp, we provide that for our rising sixth graders to help them become acclimated with middle school and having teachers and counselors there to help support them in their transition. And then again, with professional development for strengthening that pre-K to 12 continuum. And so that's 2%. So those are initiatives that go directly back to the schools and up within our district set aside. And then the other ones, opportunity and equal educational access. That is a requirement that we work with any students that are attending a private school but live in the district of one of our Title I schools. So if they're eligible and live within one of our Title I schools districts, we are required to work with those private schools and give them the opportunity to have professional development or have services to support the needs of those students in their schools. Administrative costs can be up to 12%, but we currently have only used 6% of our overall budget for administrative costs. And administrative costs, that would be Amy and my salary, Lynn, my administrative assistant, that would be her salary as well. And then indirect costs, that is given to us by the state. And for this year, it was 3.6%. So after reserving our district set asides, we then allot, again, the vast majority of the money. So 85.9% of our total budget goes directly to schools. And we have a number of ways to determine the amount of funding that each school receives. First, we can look at the free and reduced lunch percentages. So that is based upon the households completing applications for free and reduced lunch. We identify those students and then we can determine a school as eligible for Title I funds if they're 35% or more. We also have the community eligibility program. And within that, all students would receive free breakfast and lunch every day within the school. And that's determined not by free and reduced lunch, but by various agencies that these students would receive services. So it could be students in foster care, McKinney-Vento students, students receiving food stamps, supplemental nutrition assistance program, temporary assistance for needy families, et cetera. And a school has to have a minimum of 40% of their students identified as receiving those services in order to be a community eligibility program school. And then additionally, we have three focus schools. And those schools each receive a minimum of $55,000. And in order to be a focus school, you have to have the largest gap between your highest performing subgroup and your lowest performing subgroup. So at those three schools, Weddington Hills, Wyancoff and Wolf Meadow, they are identified as focused.
And approximately, how is that $55,000 spent at each school?
The schools choose. Most of them use them for teachers and things, tutors, interventions, focus on their gap area, whatever causes them to become a focus school. Yeah, it has to be targeted. But those schools make those decisions. Yes, they'll include that in their school improvement plan, absolutely. Good question. And so of our Title I schools here in Cabarrus County, this is how we've identified them. So you can see on the left, Beverly Hills, Royal Oaks, Wyancoff, Irvin and Wolf Meadow have been identified because they are community eligible schools. And then the remaining schools, AT Island and so forth, are now identified as free and reduced lunch schools. And you'll notice that we have added Bethel. And analyzing our data, a review of our data showed that many of our schools were hovering close to that 50% mark, which is what we have used for the past several years to identify our schools as Title I. So we made the decision to lower it down to 45% in order to make sure we're still serving as many students as we can. And in doing so, Bethel has now become identified as one of our Title I schools. So we'll be serving even more students next year. So next we'll talk about the schools' program plans. There are 10 school-wide components that each school must follow when they're creating their plan. And these must be aligned with the goals of their school improvement plan. So first, they'll do a comprehensive needs assessment. They'll look at data and come up with strategies that they can increase student achievement. They want to come up with strategies to help assist students in making that transition from preschool into kindergarten, looking at their teachers, making sure their teachers are highly effective, wanting to attract the highly effective teachers and retain them and provide them with professional development to help build their capacity. And also involving teachers in the decision-making process. The last three components deal more with parent and family engagement and resources for these schools as far as local services and programs that are available to them. The vast majority of the funds at the school level are used for people. So our schools, our principals and school improvement teams are making the choice to fund additional teachers, tutors and interventionists to work directly with the students on a daily basis. Also providing, again, professional development for the teachers to build their capacity and increase their toolkit in terms of strategies to close the achievement gap. After-school tutoring, again, parent and family engagement, which is really huge, getting the parents involved in the schools on several different levels in many different ways. And then, of course, purchasing instructional supplies, materials and technology to enhance the instructional program. Schools are required, along with their school improvement plan, to go along with their planning sheets, is to have a justification for how each thing, item that they're choosing to use for their funds is aligned to their school improvement plan goals. And then to have a plan for how they're going to monitor the effectiveness all throughout the year. So not just waiting for data at the end of the year, but how are you going to monitor the effectiveness of tutors and interventionists, the professional development, all throughout the year.
Can you remind me how the school improvement plan, is it kind of peer-reviewed or at some point is it validated kind of outside of the school? I know we do, yes, I know that. But do, is it, does it go through a validation process either at the school level or among other schools that are in the same categories?
So certainly, the evaluators, myself, Dr. Roth and Ben, we are involved in working with our principals and our school improvement teams to ensure that their plan is going to be as strong as it can be. Matthew Phil also has a layer of evaluation that he is involved in in ensuring that it's a strong plan as well. And then to summarize what we've discussed here tonight, again, the focus of Title I funds is to increase student achievement of our most vulnerable or at-risk students. We're going to serve 12 schools next year instead of 11, which we've been serving for the past several years. The majority of our funds are allocated directly to our schools. So they're right there in the hands of the teachers and principals and administrators within the schools. Schools are able to determine how they want to allocate their funds, but it must align with their school improvement plan goals and they must be able to monitor it all throughout the year. And then, of course, Title I funds should supplement local and state funding, not supplant.
Thank you. I like the presentation format personally. Although I miss seeing the application and I understand that that's all online now. So we won't necessarily see a paper copy. There were just a lot of details on there that helped you to understand the flow. So any questions?
What's involved with getting highly qualified, 100% highly qualified staff in the positions? I think the presentation makes several references to highly qualified.
Yeah, they have their certified, certified, so if they're an elementary teacher, that they have their license in elementary education. I think it's more difficult at the middle and high school level than it is probably at the elementary, I know.
That's correct. So we got it covered?
Yes, sir. So that's exactly correct. So for years, that's been one of the requirements for Title I-funded schools is that we ensure that all of our staff are highly qualified or certified. And as you know, we had No Child Left Behind and it had those requirements. But now No Child Left Behind is no longer there. But the state deems highly qualified to be, that they're certified in their area so that they're experts. So elementary ed would have a K6 license in elementary education. Special ed teachers, certified in special ed. ESL, certified in ESL and so forth.
Okay, thank you, ladies. That'll be on our action agenda next month, or next week, sorry, next week. Next, we'll move to item, agenda item 5.03 for the child nutrition or school nutrition program, breakfast and lunch price increases proposed for next year. So Dr. Probst and is Ms. Baker?
Her assistant.
No. My assistant is coming here. And Ms. Klutz will join.
Unfortunately, Ms. Baker is not feeling well today, so she is not here tonight. And my assistant, Kelly Klutz is here. So I'd like to talk to y'all about child nutrition prices for the 18-19 school year. As you recall, in 17-18, we did not raise lunch prices. The federal government requested a 20-cent raise or price increase and we were able to, with our fund balance, not increase the prices. At this time, for 18-19, the 20-cent increase is also a recommendation. We are able to ask that to be lowered to 10 cents. So we would like to take the minimal that is required by the federal government, a 10-cent increase, including a 10-cent increase for breakfast. It's incorrect in your agenda. It says that we haven't raised lunch prices since 2008. It's breakfast prices. We have not raised in the last 10 years. So at this time, I'll take any questions.
I'm just going to say, I don't see the breakfast price, not in the attachment. That's only the lunch prices.
If you slide down to the PDF.
Yeah, the PDF, though, what I was looking at, is that a?
It's two-page PDF and it goes down.
Oh, it's on the second page, nevermind. That's why I didn't roll. Okay, thanks. Mr. Walter?
Again, I understand what the rules are. It's just very disappointing to me that we can't continue to, that we're forced to do an increase. It does say here that the schools might choose to cover the difference with non-revenue, with revenue from non-federal funds instead of raising meal prices. What does that cost?
Approximately $8 million.
Why is that?
Because that's what the federal reimbursement is from the government. So if you don't use the federal guidelines requested, you can be audited and you can be fined, including up to no, not receiving any federal reimbursement.
And the other, I guess, I'd like to see a little more data on how many kids are actually eating, taking meals? Is that data that you could provide?
It's actually, it's actually a research question that I was starting to work on this past week. And I'm at the process of looking at the free and reduced numbers at every site as well as knowing how many children eat breakfast that are free and reduced and how many eat lunch. The difficulty on that is I can't just take a day and time. I have to do a mean and that's the process I'm working on right now. Because I think, and we've had a meeting with our principals, we want our kids eating. And if they're not eating, especially the ones that get the free breakfast and the free lunch, why and what can we do about it? Because we do believe that kids that are not hungry at school will perform better.
And we want to encourage our kids to eat lunch. Again, some, when it gets to the point where, you know, it burdens families, they may be taking lunch and we're going to lose revenue off of that as well.
Correct. I mean, if the federal government is going to pay for a free and reduced child to eat, if the child does not eat, there is no revenue, too. But most importantly, we want the children to eat.
But two, if a child cannot afford it, we make sure a child does eat. If a child comes in, is that not correct?
That is absolutely correct. Our principals and our teachers work very closely with parents, trying to get the application completed. At the beginning of the school year, there's a 30-day period where every child gets to eat, regardless of the form is in there. If there is a child that continues to not pay and we work with the parent, we give an alternative meal, which it is still a deli sandwich, fruit, grain, milk. It's not the old days.
But those fees eventually have to be paid.
Those fees do have to be paid and that's part of your policy. So I'll give you an example. Years ago, we were having trouble collecting on the unpaid fees. The schools have worked very closely. We did put a policy in that said no charges more than $8. I looked at it last week and I was pleased. We had, we were down around $15,000. When you think of 42 sites, those charges were minimal. $4 here, $5 there. And as a cabinet, we're reviewing it, too, and working with our principals to get that money collected.
And Dr. Probst, I'd like to chime in with Mr. Walters. The data per school or for Cabarrus as a whole district to me is more relevant than the comparison with other districts around the area. I would like to see our own data, maybe more so than other districts that are listed here. If the board would consider that, please.
You mean on this chart?
Yeah, I mean, to me, I'm not sure what the relevance of looking at other counties really is.
Yeah, I guess that's, to me, that shows transparency. So if there's additional data, but I wouldn't want to just subtract and get rid of this chart personally.
The chart confused me, but I just didn't understand it. And Dr. Probst did an excellent job of educating me on the, how to slice and dice the data, I suppose. But more relevant and data down at our own level, to me, would be more meaningful.
So what kind of information? Rob, I think, had a question on data. Let's figure out what this request is.
I've already spoken to Kelly on that.
Okay, so you don't have any additional questions?
Correct. We're going to produce a report that's going to look at the free and reduced rate at each site, the number of students in that, and then how many are actually eating.
Okay, there's not different rates per site?
Yeah, each school has its own free and reduced rate.
You mean as far as the reimbursement?
Correct, but each school has a free and reduced rate. That's how we can qualify for Title I at different sites.
Right. I guess what I want to clarify is if people may look at this chart and say, these are the rates for lunch.
This is a totally different research question. This here, what you have in front of you is just the cost of the meals. Everybody will have the same 10-cent increase.
So you're looking at the free and reduced quantities?
Quantity, right. So if a school has 50% of the students free and reduced, are they eating? Are 100% of that 50% population eating free and reduced lunch?
Okay, that's the goal. Absolutely. And we'd like to sell meals to those that are not free and reduced.
Do you happen to have the free and reduced rates or quantities over the last several years? So we can kind of get an idea of what's going on. You know, is our free and reduced population actually staying the same? But because we're increasing in size, it actually is going down percentage-wise? Or, you know, because we at one point were up around 43-44% and, you know, we have been seeing this decline?
We have been seeing a decline. I don't want to say it's huge. We're talking 43% maybe five years ago, 41.7% last year. It is declining, which is a good thing. It means that the county is getting wealthier. But it's not as drastic as you think.
Okay, so Mr. Shoemaker, you would like just the rates year over year or the percentage of free and reduced per school year over year for a couple of years?
Yes, over the next last three years, just so we can kind of get an idea of what's going on and keep up with the trends and.
Would you like them for the, for the site?
Since 2014 on the school nutrition side. Oh, okay.
We have it if you want to see it.
Thank you. I'll just go there.
We started tracking that and keeping it public. And the Title I folks need that information all the time.
I like it when you have your answer.
Self-answered. Okay, any other questions on the school nutrition program price change proposal? Okay, that will be on our action agenda next week. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Okay, and now we will have our inserted action, possible action item, and I guess I'll let Doctor, ask Dr. Louder to kinda lead off with some information.
Yeah, as many of you may be aware, educators across North Carolina are scheduled to gather in Raleigh on Wednesday, May 16th, for what they're calling the March for Students and Rally for Respect. Cabarrus County Schools, as of this afternoon, has received about 600 requests to be off on that day. Over 500 of those are all within the last week or so. So, there are a few of those that are probably not tied to this, but the vast majority of them are. With that number of absences, we're not able to ensure proper supervision and instruction for students. So, as a result of that, it is my recommendation to the school board to make May the 16th an optional teacher work day. I think at this point, basically, what we've seen on the internet, Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, Wake County, Guilford County, Chapel Hill, Mooresville, and Durham. Durham are the ones who are, have already announced that same thing. So, again, for really primarily the, again, as many absences as we're gonna have that day, I would just like to recommend that to the board. If we could make that decision tonight, then we can certainly notify families, so they'll know about the absence on the 16th. And also, we can start working on some alternatives to testing on those days. I think Early College has exams on that day, we may have to change that around. AP exams, IB exams are all things that we need to work with and have some time to, to address.
Okay, and one of the concerns that I had was about our employees who will not be paid if they're not working that day. They're not teachers, not certified staff. What kinds of possibilities will you be thinking about for them?
So, I think each department will look at that. I think, again, just based on what some other systems have done, some of them have scheduled some professional development for those days, and some opportunities for people that may not have been working, so maybe people in transportation, that there would be something provided. So, again, if the decision is made tonight, then those departments will start looking at those opportunities. But some of those would be things that our departments could take advantage of, too. And so, again, you have to look at budgets and make sure that works, but at this point, we would entertain those, some of those same alternatives.
Okay, and I just wanted to, I guess, make a point to the teachers, to, I'll say, be kind to the legislators. Because if it had not been for them re-granting some flexibility in our calendar, and changing one word, an "and" on an hours and days requirement to an "or", this would not even be an option. We could not consider this, we would be required to have school, or go longer in the year, which would cause issues with graduations and things. So, there's many more things I could say, but, like I said, I understand that, you know, people want to have their voice. So, other board members, comments?
And I'd like to chime in on that, too. The legislators have an extremely tough job as well, as we do at the local level. Dr. Louder, can you explain to me again, please, if we are, in effect, losing an instructional day, how are we going to recoup that instructional time? If that's-
Yes, so, as Ms. Furtenbaum alluded to, so that we're not bound by days anymore, we're bound by hours. So, the same way that sometimes when we miss a snow day, and then we forgive that day for students, but still have a workday for teachers, this would fall into that category. So, what we would recommend, again, is an optional teacher work day. Teachers have to work 215 days and get paid for that, so they either come to work or take the day off, which is the choice that they would have. And then, students would just not go to school on the 16th, but we've met the hour requirement, and they would not be required to make that up.
Other comments?
Well, one of the things is that, two, the teachers, you know, we want to make sure that we give the teachers the opportunities that they, you know, if some of them want to express their opinions, you know, we want to make sure that the teachers that do want to take that day off, that they have that opportunity. And as you say, that some of them have stressed that they wanted to have that opportunity. But again, I hope our system will work with the ones like the cafeteria workers and the other ones, and hopefully, they will, their supervisors will give them opportunity to be able, if they have the opportunity to do other things, that they will work with those employees, so they don't lose that time, you know, and be able to do some other things, so they can get paid, and that's the flip side of it, to do that. So, the ones that do want to, you know, do some other work and everything, so hopefully, our superintendent will work with those employees also. But I would, if we need to do a motion, I would make a motion-
Let me chime in first.
Oh, okay, before we do that, okay, go ahead.
Who, so who's organizing this, or what is it, it's not organized locally, it's organized on the state level? Can you explain, explain where it's coming from?
I can't necessarily explain all the details of that. My understanding is a lot of it began with NCAE, but I could be wrong on the details. I just know that, you know, it certainly picked up a whole lot of steam since the weekend, and it's, again, over, you know, over 25% of our teaching force has requested to be off for that day. So, it is definitely, it's not locally organized, or didn't begin locally, but as we've said, it's statewide, and many, what, six or seven districts have announced already, and I anticipate that number will go up considerably in the next few days.
Okay, but they're going to a rally to promote?
Yeah, I think, and somebody's jumping, if I'm wrong on this, but I believe it's the opening day of the legislature, and so, the idea is for them to, I wanna say, meet at like 10 o'clock, and kinda march down to the legislative, so there's a major rally there at the legislative building, which is the beginning of this legislative session.
There've been similar initiatives around the country, I believe, in Oklahoma, and Arizona, Colorado.
I can see Bron shaking his head, so if I wasn't right about where that originated, and you know better, then please jump in there and correct me.
Yes. So, it's a movement, so to speak.
Okay, I mean, I gotta look at it from, first as a parent, and then as, you know, locally. And as I understand it, we're gonna have people, because to going to a rally takes away an educational day, which potentially could hurt our students this late in the year, as far as preparing for tests, or preparing for whatever. You're saying that we have several hundred staff that won't typically get paid, like our bus drivers and our cafeteria workers, so we can go to a rally? And again, I am 100% supportive of our teachers. I just think there's gotta be a creative, some type of an alternative than shutting down our whole school system for a day. I mean, maybe there could be a representative, one from each school, put them on an activity bus, and bus them up there for that rally. But to shut down everything just seems like a huge sacrifice, and costly sacrifice, where I don't see the, if there's a benefit, maybe so. But there should be something creative that we can do, other than shutting down our system for a rally up there.
Other board members, comments?
I think I hear Dr. Louder saying that it would be less disruptive to take that approach than to work with several hundred absences, and...
Can we not communicate to our staff and say, hey, these are the challenges that we're facing? Can we come up with something else, collaboratively? Cabarrus County, come up with something, instead of just granting all the requests and having that affect our system?
Okay, I'd like to just, I guess, make one more comment. I think it's important, just whatever the board decides to do tonight, I think it's important for our staff, teachers, and others, that this board advocates for our school system on a daily basis. Our leadership, Dr. Louder, Ms. Reimer, Ms. Jones, Ms. Klutz, others, advocate with our legislators on a regular basis. There are so many things and conversations that happen behind the scenes that people don't know about, to try to instill the importance of receiving funding, both from the county and from the state. We can't always get our way, but we are out there saying these things. So, I don't want anybody to have the impression that we have not been working to relieve things that are considered unfunded mandates.
Can we come up with a resolution to support our teachers in this effort? I mean, is that something we, as a board, can do?
In the effort of that particular day?
This particular thing, yes. I mean, I'd like to do what I can that doesn't really affect our, isn't gonna hurt our school system, our kids, and our families.
Yeah. But anyway, I just hold that thought for a moment. So anyways, I just want the public to know that we do work on this on a regular basis, building relationships with people, providing information, whether it be about deferred maintenance, or a bill before the legislature. Many of you may have just seen the article in the paper, that Representative Johnson visited one of our schools to talk about, basically, mental health support and mental health professionals needed at all different school levels. So, those kinds of events don't always make the paper. In fact, most of the time, they don't. They're one-on-one conversations that may be at another community meeting, or maybe a visit to Raleigh, or some scheduled activity, like the legislative breakfast. So, we try, I, I'm concerned that this event is a double-edged sword. It could either be very, very positive, or could turn out badly, as far as, for example, we are seeking additional calendar flexibility, so that we can go back to starting school maybe a week earlier in August, try to get these kids with their exams finished in December. That program that we did for a number of years was so beneficial, and that was the legislator, legislature can grant, and they can take it away. So, they took away that calendar flexibility, where students were able to finish, even a high school sometimes, in their three and a half years, and went to the military, started college in January, and a number of things, based on their personal desires and family needs. So, they took it away, they gave us back this flexibility three years ago. I'm very concerned this is going to be seen as a misuse of calendar flexibility. Like I said, while I support the teachers, I'm very concerned. So, I hope, if we grant this, and whoever goes to Raleigh and communicates with our representatives up there, that they will handle their advocacy with the professionalism of their position, their occupation, and that it will be for the good. So, it's very, the phrase I used all weekend was, "I'm conflicted." So, I absolutely understand the desire. As Mr. Walters said, I'm a little concerned about the methods, so. So anyways, Ms. Carpenter, do you wanna make a motion?
Well, yes, I'm with you. It's a double-edged sword here, but is, if we've got 25% of our teachers that are gonna be gone, it's gonna be kinda hard to get subs, and that's where we're in a dilemma. If we don't have enough subs to teach-
I mean, do they realize that? I mean, that's something we need to communicate with the teachers.
They, they realize that. They realize that, so I can't have school if I don't have that. I'm a realist about this.
It has been publicly communicated on social media to sign up.
So, with that in mind, I feel like I'm put between a rock and a hard place. And so, with that in mind, I'm gonna say that we do it, and so, I'm making that motion that we do.
I second the motion.
Okay, so, the motion is to grant, or to change the calendar for March 16th, I'm sorry, May 16th, to make it an optional teacher work day?
Optional teacher work day.
And that is for 2018 only?
2018 only, yes.
Okay, so we have the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, the second by Dr. Kirk. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion passes from six to one?
Can I also say, what we will probably do is, well, not probably, we will send out an email to our employees tomorrow to explain that, and then we'll send out a connect ed to the parents to begin that process and start advertising it tomorrow. So, again, we just, if everybody could kinda, I'm sure there's some people will know, and it'll go out, and that's okay, but we try to communicate that as consistently as possible, and appreciate if you'd let us kinda do that till tomorrow night, and then it'll kinda run the cycle.
Okay, and before, while, it just reminded me, when Dr. Louder said about a connect ed, just as a note on, for the community, on May 10th, so, next Thursday, Ms. Reimer, right? This Thursday, this Thursday, sorry, in a couple of days. On May 10th, there will be an, the first public information session at the Concord Public Library on Union, huh?
Public Information-
Oh, that one's at J. Robinson? Okay, the public information session regarding the full district realignment. So, it's just an information session. It will not be for, I'll say, people to stand up and say, I wanna move this here, and move that there. That's what the committee will be working on. But this is to just be transparent and communicate with the general public, so they can see what's going on. There are multiple public information sessions, those will be advertised as we go on. And there is a connect ed that is going out, actually, it may have already started rolling out tonight, about that as well, so parents are aware. Again, J. Robinson at five, what time, 6 o'clock, J. Robinson on May 10th. Okay, there's also going to be a link on the school system website.
Is the, is the content of what they're gonna be sharing on the link, what is the meeting for?
I think this is the very first information, so I'm guessing it's the general, here's what we're going to do, here's how we're going to work through it. This first one will be the general information. So... Yes, May 10th. Thursday night. Yeah, May 10th is on Thursday, 6 o'clock, J. Robinson.
Wednesday is the first committee meeting, that, remember, there were applications for the committee, that committee will meet Wednesday at 5:30 at the Concord Library. Thursday is the first public information session, there will be three of those, and then ultimately, there'll be some feedback sessions where people can discuss and ask questions. But it kinda begins the process on Wednesday with the first formal meeting of that committee.
And I think it's important for the public to understand, while you could go to any of these meetings, only the committee will directly participate in their committee meetings. Everyone else will be an observer, so.
Have we seen a distribution of who's on the committee list? We won't see that list until that first meeting?
So, that was picked by the Cropper GIS, and we do not have that list, so you will be getting a board report next week from that company, on the 14th. And so, if that's a question you have, I can certainly send it to him and ask him if he will provide that for you.
I think it would be good for the public to know who the committee is, so at least they'll be looking for people they know on the committee-
Sure.
Before the committee starts meeting. But that apparently doesn't sound like it can happen on that kinda timeline.
Happen, I'm sorry, what, David?
Well, if we have a committee, and the board is not gonna get the list of the committee members until next week, but the committee is meeting this week.
David, I think I agree with you.
Do we need-
Again? No, Ms. Reimer.
We can get that list, but it's not, the board is supposed to step back from this process. This is not for us to communicate, huh?
Right, we paid $140,000.
Ultimately, in the end, but the goal by having this committee, that we did not have input into the selection. And I think when we get a report next week, you will see how, I'll say, engaged and professional these gentlemen are. I haven't met them yet, but I've talked to one of them. So, I don't think there's any objection probably to us having the membership list. We just need to make sure we are not engaging and pushing individual opinions. Let them work through the process, and then if we have questions as we're presenting information, we can certainly ask for reasons why. What are they considering, how are they doing this or that, so?
Agreed.
I just think we need to allow them to operate independently without us being too influencing to their activities.
At this point, I don't disagree with letting them operate independently, but this is public.
Yeah.
And so, I think, Ms. Reimer, if you could just give us a list of who the people are, that's fine, we're not gonna manipulate anything.
It may be in the presentation next week, I don't know what's in there.
I can ask him, I do not have the committee myself, that was chosen by the company, however, no, sir. Our staff are not on the committee, these are all community members. The information that I received is that it's a geographical representation of our district. There were over 100 applications that they went through. So, I can ask Mr. Cropper if he would send that, and I'll send it to Ms. Furtenbaum if he does. And if he says no, I'll get him to explain why he doesn't wanna do it. So, we'll see if we can get that as soon as possible for you. But I do not have a copy now.
And I will tell you, Mr. Cropper, and this is off-topic here, it's not on the agenda, but Mr. Cropper- And I will tell you, Mr. Cropper, and this is off-topic here, it's not on the agenda, but Mr. Cropper was concerned if we would have a quorum at any meeting. So we may wanna have Ms. Monroe do the meeting notices for us, and please be honest with your replies, so that we do not have a quorum at any of these presentations. Or certainly, if we are there, separate broadly. Okay.
Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair.
Just real quickly, I just wanted to ask our teacher liaison, I'm stepping back one notch here. Just real quickly, you know, we were talking about this meeting in Raleigh. If you real quickly could kinda state, kind of, what the teachers are gonna, what their main concerns are. Maybe you could let our public kinda know what their main concerns are, and what they were gonna be addressing. You maybe have heard what the teachers' main concerns are.
The main thing is that we, it's for the future of our students. It's, it's not all about teacher pay. It's about per pupil funding, it's about better conditions, safer conditions for our students. And that's, that's the main, the main goal, is that we want the future of every student in this state to be brighter, because we went to Raleigh on May 16th. So Mr. Walter made the comment, you know, it's gonna affect them that one day, it will, but the goal is to affect the, affect them even greater in the future by taking that one day, starting something that's gonna, five years from now, 10 years from now, North Carolina's gonna have even greater teachers in the classroom. So I mean, it's, and people are, in, in all the talk, it's gonna be teacher pay, teacher pay. It's really, we want what's best for our students, they're worth more than what they're getting now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Our next agenda item is the board meeting calendar for the school year 2018-19. You've had the calendar review, it's in the board docs as well. You will notice one thing on there that we're going to try out, it's only there for the next six months, and that is trying to have a designated day for appeal hearings. So these are not for grievance hearings, but for appeal hearings. So that we can be responsible, I'll say, as a board, in a timely way, plan for these dates. If we don't need it, we'll cancel. The other thing we could do, if we did get into a situation with construction or something else, we could always repurpose the meeting. We would have it on our calendars. So like I said, it's, what I'd like to propose is that we approve these for, that are on here for the next six months. In three months, evaluate if that worked better, if that was a little easier for Ms. Monroe to schedule, for Dr. Lottor, Ms. Reimer to have things on their calendars. And then also for parents to know, this is the night we do appeal hearings. And so when they have an appeal and they request that they bring their appeal before the board, we already have a date and time ready for them, so.
We need to make clear that those are not public meetings, that those are closed-session hearings.
Yeah, should, can we do that, Mr. Shaw? I guess mark those as...
Well, they actually are public meetings. You open an open session, then you go into closed session. So somebody could be there for the opening, then the vote to go into closed session, and then when you reconvene and open, it's not much utility in that, but it is a public meeting.
Okay. Well, that's, thanks for the clarification on that. It's still, I've never seen a person, public, one of our hearings, but...
So the one thing I did wanna call attention to, Ms. Monroe, on the August 21st, or, the Tuesday, August 28th, I'm wondering if we can switch that to August 21st for two reasons. One, the 28th is the night of an information session for the realignment. And the second thing is, we start school that week. So if we do have any last-minute appeal hearings, I'd rather have those right before school starts, in case we're granting a movement of a school. So if, if we could do that, make that one change to August 21st.
I'd also like to see that the November 5th meeting be moved to five, start time at 5:30.
Uh, why is that?
It's the day before an election, I'm sure some of these, some of our board members have things to do that evening.
Oh, I'm sure I will.
It'd be nice to be able to start a little bit early to allow that to conclude.
Yeah, I, I, personally, I think we need to keep it on the regular schedule.
And then my second, second request is, as we did this year, we held at least one of our work sessions at a school to highlight the school, an opportunity to, to go to a different area instead of always at the Ed Center. And I would like to see that again in this calendar.
I believe that the Mount Pleasant Middle School, we had a very light audience that night. And I just know from the communications with staff that week before, it was a, a lot of logistical activity for, maybe not the game we had originally hoped for when we approved that on the calendar.
I mean, that's a difference of opinion, and I thought it was well worth, you know, it was well worth going. We learned a lot about the school, we had our principal talk to us, and we wouldn't, probably not have gotten otherwise.
Well, we'll have a new high school open, and also we'll have another one.
Not in this school year, the next school year.
Well, this coming school year, we'll have a couple, we'll have, we'll have Royal Oaks, will we not, soon?
We'll have PLC.
PLC, there you go, so.
And we'll have Royal Oaks, we will have Royal Oaks.
Those would be two suggestions.
Other board members, your thoughts?
I don't like the Tuesday for appeals. I think it should be, I'm okay with more of a selection of days instead of pick one and, and go with it. Those of us that have kids that are practicing, Tuesday, Thursday is kind of a very, very popular practice night for those of us that actually have kids in the district that are of age. And I also like to maintain flexibility for those that are needing the appeal process. Maybe Tuesday does not work, so I, you know, up till now, the flexibility that Ms. Monroe has provided has seemed to work out. I don't think we've ever had to cancel an appeal hearing because we couldn't get the required number of board members there to hear the case.
Yeah, I think we were just trying to simplify it, instead of going back and forth on who can attend what night. I know we've had at least two board members each of the Wednesdays, sometimes three, that Wednesdays are, I'll say, other family activities, church night, and so on. So have specifically requested. And we used to stay completely away from Wednesdays anyways for, for church activity, family activity reasons. So. Thoughts?
Can we have a recap of what has been proposed here?
Okay, so one proposal is to move one meeting. Rob said which, any month, any particular month or any month?
I don't have a preference, I just, I would say in one of those meetings that, that we don't anticipate a large, large crowd.
I said we're gonna have a large crowd, I don't know.
You mean like the, you mean like the large crowd we have tonight?
Exactly, this would work out perfect.
I'm just going, because we only have, well, I guess we still do have the two meetings in December.
Can I just speak to the staff on both of those? You know, obviously, that will do what the will of the board is. But the, the traveling board meeting is very difficult for technology, for the logistics of getting there. Mount Pleasant Middle is closer, but when you start talking about traveling to Royal Oaks and everything that goes with Royal Oaks and food, refreshments, it really is a burden on the, but obviously, if the board chooses to go to a school, we'll go to a school. I would just say, kind of in Ms. Monroe's defense, and, you know, the, the scheduling process for these hearings are, is quite a bit. So I think you would be surprised at how many, let's try this one, let's try this one, this one won't work. So you're not just negotiating with board members, you're also sometimes negotiating with two, three, four different families. So there really is quite a burden there that having a set day would be, you know that's where it's gonna be, and, and everybody try to plan on it. So just try to, again, represent the staff in both of those, and say a set day, I think, unburdens the staff to some degree, and not traveling's the same. But, but at the end of the day, obviously, this is board decision.
I really do like the idea of the public attending our meetings, but this kit and kaboodle ain't easy to, to pick up and, and move around the...
We're not talking every month, there are more times, just once a year.
I think we'd have better luck providing snacks for people to, to entice them to come to this meeting than we would to get them to come to a meeting that was in their backyard. So I'm being facetious there.
I agree with you, David.
I'm being, I'm being facetious there. We, we just don't have a great track record of taking the, the event to a different place to attract more people to attend. And, and it's expensive. I believe we've said in the past that it was like $2,000 or something to actually do that, the few times that we did.
Turned out not to be quite the case, but, I mean, everybody's got an opinion, I think it's worthwhile, worth our time.
Madam Chair, this is an action out item for...
Okay, what I'd like to do is address each of these individually. So do I have a motion to move one of the meetings? I'll say one that would not be a public hearing, or maybe a budget meeting or whatever, to an alternative site, and that would be a work session.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and you're proposing the site be maybe Royal Oaks?
Is it, and if it's possible, again, just from, if we don't have to film the meeting, then there's a lot less things that go with that. So I would, again, just say, if you're gonna travel, would you consider not filming the meeting, because there's quite a bit of labor involved with that?
Yes, or letting the students come up?
We don't save money on that. Our contract calls for the monthly meetings, just so you know. It's not a money savings, we just wouldn't use the service.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. All in favor of moving a meeting to an alternate site, one work session to an alternate site, say aye. So that's two. Those opposed? Aye. Vince, you're... Okay, the motion fails. Two, four, five opposed? Okay. So now we'll address the, well, actually, we can, the Tuesdays are on here with the one change to move August 28th to the 21st. I'm sorry?
The November 5th start line.
Okay, so we'll take that one separate, 'cause there's too many pieces here that people may independently want or not want. And so, so we have a motion to move the November 5th meeting to 30 minutes earlier to start at 5:30. Do we have a second?
I mean, 30 minutes, that's not gonna make that much difference to me.
Okay, so the motion fails for last, for second. Okay, then the calendar adds, as is presented with that one adjustment of the August 28th to August 21st. Of a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
So move.
So Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. Okay, all in favor of approving the calendar as presented, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that is six to one in favor. Okay, and then we will revisit after three, maybe four months, on the planned appeal date, and see if that makes a difference. If that is helpful for staff, for scheduling, or what caveats there might be, but, and then at that point, we would schedule or not schedule the rest of the year, so. Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is regarding legal services review. So board members, I sent you, I'll say, my personal analysis of one of the month's bills, just to kinda show the effect of our, 'cause this year's contract for legal services was a little different than what we had previously. And in board docs, you do have the proposed, oh, you do have the proposed new rate chart. So we don't have to make a decision tonight, you can kind of mull over it, but I just wanna explain a couple things. And Mr. Shaw provided the information, so he can answer questions as well. So the retainer that we have right now, I believe, is the F-alternate, right?
The amount, $3,000.
Yeah, the $3,000, which covers our regular meetings, work session, and business meeting, and covers policy and six workshops. Due to the, I'll say, time involved with our meetings, because we have lots of things on our schedule, on our agendas, they have reevaluated, and we would, that would now fall into column H. And I, how many workshops did we have this year? We had five? That's, that's what was in our retainer?
The current rate chart is pretty much what you see there with H being $3,000.
$3,000, six workshops.
Instead of $5,000, which is what we are proposing.
Plus the policy, plus the policy meetings are included.
It includes six workshops, of which we have done five.
Five, right.
And then all, we do not bill separately for policy work, that's just part of the retainer.
And the hourly rate is an increase of $5, which is, by your calculations, is about 3%. That has a different effect on the bill because of what's included in retainer, what's straight, hourly rates because of the 10th of an hour. Note that the, or the quarter hour, I'm sorry, the timekeepers, meaning the, the providers of the service, bill in quarter hour increments. The second, separate analysis I sent you, like I said, was just to look at, because that was very different for us this past year. So we previously had a higher hourly rate, but we had a much more granular, one-tenth of an hour, as in six minutes, as opposed to 15 minutes service point. So last year, we had talked about the pros and cons, and where do you break even? The chart you had, so we really have kind of two decisions to make here. One is, do we continue with Schwartz and Shaw for another year, or whatever period the board prefers? Do we keep the separate per-hour agreement with Hartzell-Williams for construction local-type issues? Or do we go out to bid? I mean, there's, you can kind of go into endless options there. So are there any questions you all have right now? Ms. Klutz provided the summer, summerization of the construction and regular school legal fees. This year was a slightly more expensive year, not massive amount. I know we were hoping to decrease our bill, we actually increased it. But what questions do you have? I, I don't necessarily know the answers, I've been studying this, but we have Mr. Shaw here, so. Any preferences, so how to, how to look at this?
I just had a question, do we get an evaluation for Hartzell-Williams? Did you do an evaluation, superintendent do an evaluation for Hartzell-Williams? I haven't seen anything.
No, I don't think we did, 'cause it's so, so isolated.
I haven't done one for anybody. I haven't done one for Schwartz and Shaw either.
We got an email saying you did one.
Well, I gave them this little summary of comments, the pros and cons.
Yeah, yeah, we just kinda weighed in as far as what the experience had been, and obviously, that was it, but, and, and we did the same thing with Hartzell and Williams, the things that we thought were plus and minus, but, you know, we're talking like a two-minute conversation.
That was, I sent you guys everything I had.
Was that just...
And I think that the only real comment there was, or, was that the staff now had two different firms to go to, and deciding sometimes when there might be a slight crossover type issue on where it goes. So there was that one, and then I think for both Hartzell and Williams and Schwartz and Shaw, there were sometimes response time issues. So for Hartzell and Williams, we're not a full-time client, and we're not their biggest client, so we're gonna fall down to "I'll call you back," you know, status on some occasions. So with Schwartz and Shaw, I think, you know, Brian had previously said, and it may have been in the email I forwarded to you, that they had not anticipated in its entirety the amount of work we were, from the standpoint of our meetings and volume of meetings and so on, so. Like I said, so I think both firms are acclimated to us now on, 'cause I'm sure every district is different, right?
That's true.
So those are satisfactory evaluations?
Yeah, we didn't do a one to five, I mean, I guess we could do that, but we don't, we as board members don't have as much experience as staff does, so.
No, but it's, the policy says we're supposed to make our decision on, rather, continue with the current port attorney, attorney based on this evaluation. So the evaluation that we got was fairly positive, that we can work with them, and they're doing a good job.
It was, yeah, it was neutral at least, yes.
Well, one of the things, you know, I know when we started talking, we were, and again, I know when we first, you know, and when we took out change firms, we were all, and went with the hourly rate with a smaller retainer. The retainer we did have was close to $20,000. And I know our hopes, we're hoping we would be at a less amount. And that, looking at those totals, that's definitely not where we were, we were at.
If you think that it's a new, new law firm, obviously, some of those, one of those months was kinda out of whack. But if you take out the high, the high and the low, you're, you're pretty consistent. You're not, there's, it's not a big difference.
Well, it's not where we were hoping to be, and... Well, it's not where we were hoping to be, and retainer wise, I don't think we're where we need to be with the retainer. I mean, we got a lot more with the retainer with where we used to be than where we are now.
But we have, if we were new, then we have options. We have A through H, so we could, we can decide which one of those things is in our best financial interest, right?
And we're doing the highest one they have available.
Okay.
Yeah, that's H.
So that's in our best financial interest to do that?
Yeah, they just don't offer a more comprehensive retainer like the previous firm.
But we're still, our problem is that, the, the, that fourth of an hour, what is it, fourth of an hour?
Quarter of an hour, yes.
Quarter of an hour, that's killing us. That is killing us, where we were at an eighth of, of what, a?
A six.
A six of an hour.
A 10, sorry.
Tenth of an hour. That's what's, that's what's hurting us, I think, the most, and that's why I don't know if it's too, when we do that, plus the construction part and add those together, plus throw on the other stuff we have, that's what's killing us.
Carolyn?
And that's why I don't know if it's to our advantage to say, okay, let's give it three months and then possibly go back out for RFQ again. I mean, I, I want to make sure that we're doing the best that we need to. I mean, this was a, kind of a trial period for us more than anything else to see what we had out there and make sure we were getting what we really needed.
Carolyn, I, I agree with you completely, but over the past year, I, I think you would probably have to agree, there's a lot of cases where we've, we've had to adjust our practices and our policies because it, it just, it wasn't aligned with the law. And so there were, there were just a lot of cases, I, you know, it seemed like for the first six months, there were just multiple issues that we had to work through, and I'm sure all of that was a big, big piece of that kind of introductory period. And I, I don't like spending money to attorneys. I mean, I, trust me.
Oh, I don't either. You know I don't.
But, but at the same time, I'd like, I'd like to make sure we're following law and to know that we are following law and it's, you know, the law is very easy to read and, um, you know, to make sure that we're following it, I think is important. And once we get to the point where our practices and our policies are in line completely, we don't go through all of our policies at once. It's usually kind of a, on an as-needed basis. So I, you know, I, I'm with you, but I'm, I'm happy, so.
I was going to ask Mr. Shaw. I think we will agree that we were not in violation of the law. There was what I'll call more educational experience in certain aspects and sometimes different interpretations. So I don't want to defame our prior firm by saying we weren't following the law. Many things that I asked personally on policies were either clarification or a different interpretation based on experience, so.
We vote on a policy. It's not like that, I mean, it's our decision, so it's not like an attorney makes us do anything. So, yeah, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I would agree. Different attorneys have different interpretations on things. We have the utmost respect for Womble and their attorneys, and they're, of course, the leading law firm in the state, and sometimes we just have different interpretations. That's all, all I can say. We would have different interpretations between Richard Schwartz and myself on some matters. We just do the best we can to try to follow the law and, and keep the board out of, out of liability, as I'm sure any attorney would do. One thing I would mention on the quarter of an hour, I don't think, versus the tenth of an hour, I don't think it's as big of a deal as board members might think. It only comes into play if, if our billings, quarter of an hour, quarter of an hour, quarter of an hour. But if we're billing five hours on a matter, then the difference is between 5.1 versus 5.25, perhaps. It doesn't make much of a difference. I would say if that is a concern, we could take that chart and make it a tenth of an hour and add $10 to the hourly rates. And I think that'd still be exceptionally competitive, but if that would alleviate board members' concerns as to whether there is somehow an unfair billing in there, we, we, our tradition has been for 23, 25 years since I've been there to bill in quarter hourly rates. If that is a problem for a board, we can certainly adjust that.
Well, we had, both of our, well, I say, Womble billed us at the 10th and also Hartzell Williams billed us at the 10th. And in a lot of cases, you're right, it doesn't matter, but when I analyzed the February bill and shared it with the board members, in one EC case, there were 19 separate billing lines for five and a half hours total. So in that case, that, those kinds of situations become very obvious that it wasn't straight through time. It was maybe five minutes here, maybe three minutes there, another seven minutes here, and so we paid for that whole accumulation of time. Now, that doesn't happen, I say, I can probably, I can put a count if on here. There were several, I'll say, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Have you reanalyzed it?
Sixty-two and a half.
Sixty-two and a half hours that were?
Wait, in February.
I'm not sure what you mean by that one.
In February, there were 250 instances of quarter hour charges. That, based on just that arithmetic, it's 62 and a half hours worth of quarter hour charges, which at 165 comes up to, you know, some number. So when you start looking at, the 250 instances weren't, we didn't have a quarter of an hour of activity with you on the phone or with you doing work. It was just a quarter of an hour because it was started when the phone got picked up and, and it continued after the phone was put down. And we don't know what interval of time, we don't want your mean, your standard deviation or any of that is, but we know that we got a quarter of an hour that you charged on that. So that, that is where, what kind of drove that, you know, drives a lot of the bill when you had a total of 95 hours for the month of February and 62 and a half of them were involved with quarter of an hour increments. So you see, you see why?
Oh, I, I can understand it. And, for example, our standard practice would be if there's one email, it's a quarter of an hour. Two emails, quarter of an hour. Three emails, quarter of an hour. So we, we have the multiplicity. But as I say, it's probably, one can speculate as to what it would be. If that's a concern, I think the way to do it is to go to a quarter, to a tenth of an hour. And that would be, if we added $10 to it, that is about a, what? A five percent, six percent increase in the hourly rate? We think we would be covered by that. I don't think there's an issue of, of, of a quarter of, quarter hour affecting things by anything more than that. If there is, then we would be taking the hit if we increased it by $10 an hour.
And I think we can probably mull on that over this weekend. We already not like to play with our numbers, and David does too.
I think we need to play with them, because I'm still, I'm, I'm following Mr. Shaw here. I'm just looking, looking at the numbers and just using seven, the last seven months of bills. So you're taking out the big $61,000, and we're talking about this one at $20,238, we're talking about the February bill. Our previous attorney, there was not but one month that they had less than that. Every one of their bills is more than that, that $20,000. And I'm just, I mean, I'm just trying to compare here. If you're just looking at seven months, Womble Carlisle was $208,000. Schwartz and Shaw was $198,000. So that's less. When you add in the $20,000 with Hartzell Williams, okay, it comes up a little bit more, but it's still not a huge difference. I don't see how, like he, he was, he was talking, that the quarter hour is really making much of a difference. It's still less than what.
If you look at the spreadsheet that shows the quarter hours, that summary doesn't show the quarter hours.
Yeah, the summary looks at the big picture, and that's what we were trying to compare, apples to apples, because we're not, we're not looking at the individual charges that were done before.
But going back to our driving last year was to lower the bill, so looking at opportunities on how that might happen, that's where this quarter hour discussion comes in.
Madam Chair, can I ask, uh, a related question? Can you help me understand the half-day workshop presentations? We have State School Board Association, we have the Law Conference, we have the Policy Conference, if any of us choose to go to those items. We have online training, we have a variety of other opportunities to be trained on specifics of the law or updates of the law. Is this workshop component, to some extent, duplicative of other opportunities? Help me under, sell it to me if you can.
Sure.
What workshops accomplish that, other opportunities or other avenues do not accomplish?
Sure. Well, what we do for workshops on the far end, on the higher retainers, is to add additional workshops. I think most of these have some workshops. We find most of our school clients like to have workshops. One of the most common is new teacher orientation. We did that this year. We find it's very cost-effective to do special education workshops, and Rachel Hitch did one this year. That's, that's, that's money that is saved.
504.
The 504 IDA was a workshop. There was a Summer Leadership Academy workshop that Richard did in July.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Harrison said, he's thinking that it's board training, and what it is, is really for, as you said, it's for new teacher training, it's for an EC update.
Some of which are crucial, I understand that.
So, yeah, three or four, and they're, they're kind of built in every year for a law academy and then some strategic things that we use that, regardless of the law firm we would have, we're going to be using that to keep our employees, administrators and/or teachers updated on the law. So however you're charged for that, these are all fairly standard that we had in the past and have under Schwartz and Shaw.
And how many do we have to have? I mean, how many are crucial and?
Well, as, as we said, when we get together as a cabinet and decide how we're going to do it, we, we wish there were more, let's put it that way. We, so there's never an, you know, enough legal training, I think, and so we try to figure out how to use those strategically. But again, it would, it would line up fairly similarly with a district our size of needing that, that type of legal update pretty regularly.
I guess I'm recalling a few times when the board itself did have some half-day workshops on different topics.
On you, we did six, nine, 10.
Six with H.
Yeah, board members, I just sent you the list that Mr. Shaw provided this afternoon of the workshops that have been conducted this afternoon.
There was the one that I was involved with, Laura Crumpler. We did one on board ethics. And then, so I think another one was board perhaps, but most were staff. It's up to the school district, whatever the particular need is. The, the goal of that is to try to provide an incentive to have those workshops because they're essentially free, but quotes around it, but they're built into the fee. So there's not an additional charge, and the school district does not have to think about, we would like a workshop, but we don't know if we want to incur that expense. It's already part of the services provided under that retainer, so there's an incentive. But if there are too many workshops, we can cut them down. If you want more, we can add them. We, we are perfectly glad to discuss any arrangement that might work better with the board. For example, a larger retainer. And that, that's a, that's not been our practice, but we're certainly glad, glad to do it. It's easier to do that retainer once you've had a year's experience, as to what, what an average month might be, what an average year might be. And the other thing I would point out, and I'm sure Mr. Enriquez would agree, that you can't, you know, every month is not the same, every year is not the same. If you have a big special education case, that blows the budget. If you have a lot of appeal hearings, that blows the budget. Certainly, you, looking over the course of a year, you get an idea, but it could have been a very difficult year or it could have been a light year. We just do the best we can with, with what is presented and, but very, you know, we know it's a hard sell to school districts to pay money for attorneys when there are other pressing needs. We think in the long run, it saves you money, but we're very aware of that and we're always receptive to any other ways of dealing with it. And if there are problems, any concerns or issues, responsiveness, I, I think I noted that here, we'll be, we want to work on those, and we think it's been working, but it's a, that's a board call, how that works. We're always receptive to, to working improvement.
As Mr. Fur was, would say, that we're getting into the weeds here. I mean, our policy says, the board attorney will be evaluated on responsiveness, accessibility, experience, knowledge of school law, knowledge of Cooperstown County schools, proactive communication and judgment, and any written evaluation will be shared with all board members. Based on that evaluation, the board will decide whether to continue with the current board attorney or seek a new counsel in some or all the areas of responsibility. So I think we have our evaluation. I think, you know, we can vote or we don't vote, so.
Well, we're not voting tonight anyway, so.
Next week. But I think we're getting into the weeds if we're going way into a lot of this.
Well, I think we need to remember though, why we changed, and that was the concern over the fees. So if you're not meeting the goal, then you need to, as Mr. Shaw has opted, there's some other perhaps viewpoints to look at as far as rate structure. So if you all would, you know, kind of think about that, what you want to have occur and what else you need for next week. If you could contact me, email me by Wednesday night, I'll say, just to give them an opportunity to gather that information for us, and then we can, we'll have it on the action agenda next week. So, okay?
We'll be glad to provide any information, and I will say this, whatever the board decides, we've, it's been a privilege, and we hope it continues, certainly, to represent the board's education. But that's, that's the board call. It's, it's not something that we have a vote on, nor should we. It's something that, what works for you. And if, if this works, that's great. If it doesn't, then let's hope something else works better for you. But we, we have enjoyed it.
Okay. Thank you all. So we are now, board members, at the time to, where we need to convene in closed session briefly. So I'll call for a motion to convene in closed session that the pursuant to general statute 143, 318, 11a 3, to consult with an attorney employed retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, and pursuant to general statute 143, 318, 11a 6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee to review personnel recommendations. Dr. Kerd make the motion.
Second.
Ms. Cooper made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a question.
Thank you and good night to our viewing audience.